You're on time.
The rest of us are late.
Call to order the June 18th, 2018 meeting of the Ellsworth, uh, monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. First item on the agenda, uh, second item on the agenda, pleasurable issues.
See ya.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also neglected to say that all councilors are present this evening.
And timely. Present.
Item three on the agenda, rules of order. These meetings are run by Robert's Rules of Order, uh, and any other rules that we adopted at the organizational meeting in November of 2017. Item four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meetings, May 4th, 2018, special meeting, May 21st, 2018, regular meeting. In that, we have a request to table on the 21st.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the May 4th special meeting minutes?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, move table to May 21, regular minutes?
Second. All those in favor? Item five, city manager's report. Manager Cole.
Uh, it's summer, so the waterfront concert series begins on July 6th, running weekly on Friday nights in July and August, free admission, uh, put on by The Grand and sponsored by the City of Ellsworth. Taste of Ellsworth is coming on June 30th, uh, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, $37.50 for adults, $15 for children, and $40 at the door, and with too many sponsors to mention, but still appreciated. And for some foolish reason, I agreed to be one of the three judges of this event, so I will be there myself.
I'm sure it was hard to lure you there, Dave, with all that food.
Free ticket.
Free ticket.
Free ticket, right. I didn't realize the free ticket till afterwards, but... And the Ellsworth Concert Band will be in Harbor Park, uh, beginning, uh, on Wednesday nights, beginning on July 11th, and run every Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:00 PM until August 15th, finally. Uh, the, uh, construction or reconstruction of the parking lot behind water and main streets is progressing very well. Uh, within the next, uh, one to two days, the, um, course coat should be finished on the entire lot, and of course, that's involved, uh, putting in a new base. Uh, there's also new fixtures going in, uh, as well as the finish coat. Uh, so it should be, uh, coming along by the end of the month and finished, and it looks very good. And that's all I have to note tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
I went through that parking lot, and it's almost like walking through the Taj Mahal. It's just beautiful.
Just the gravel is a big improvement, wasn't it?
Yeah. Nice black tower.
Item six, committee reports. Set this time aside, do see if any of the councilors have any reports to make on any committee meetings that they may have attended over the past month. Counselor Moore?
Well, I, uh, attended the Harbor Commission meeting on, uh, June 13th, and, uh, it was a good report. The, uh, it said the piling work went very well, and that, uh, Prock Marine, uh, seems to have done an excellent job, and I, I hope a lot of people had a chance to get down and see that piece of equipment down there doing all that work. It's like being in the big time. Um, we also found out that we received a $15,000 grant that will, uh, substantially pay for the, um, uh, ice eaters, which, if all things go as we hope they will, will, uh, prevent a recurrence of the, uh, damage that was done by the, uh, winter down at the, at the harbor. Um, the Ellsworth Garden Club, uh, is again working their magic down there with planting flowers and so forth, and, uh, uh, they've been very good about, uh, working down there. Uh, the crew has, uh, put in some new picnic tables, because they're even adding a small picnic table, uh, out by the, the new, uh, gazebo, draws some people out there. Um, some new boats have been, uh, added to the anchorage, and that make, brings us up to 50 craft, and, uh, there's, uh, still a pretty good demand for, um, uh, dockage that we don't have right now. Uh, Adam kind of looking into it to see if, um, if there's some way that we couldn't add, add some more, uh, it wouldn't cost too much upfront, and he feels that, uh, in the first year, they could end up, uh, getting off dock fees to, uh, pay for the cost of doing it, but that's still in the discussion phase right now. Um, and the only things available right now are two deep-water moorings, so it's, it's pretty busy. Uh, the kayak rack is full, uh, so needless to say, there's a discussion going on now to see if there's any, uh, interest in creating a second kayak rack. We've got to say that a bunch of times to really get the full flavor of it. Um, and that's, that just about sums it up.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fordham?
Two very quick ones. Recreation Commission meeting was canceled. Um, seems like a lot of our rec commission have kids that are in spring sports, and getting a scheduled time's been a problem. Nothing really intense going on. We did all our work over the fall and winter. Um, and the other report was, uh, tomorrow, we will have our second, uh, meeting of the Emergency Medical Services Committee to look at the future of EMS in, in Ellsworth in particular, and the region as a whole. Um, we had an organizational meeting a couple of weeks ago, set some dates. They're all posted, uh, on the city clerk's, uh, counter out there if anybody wants to, to sit in on them. Um, and we'll get going reviewing all the information from the, uh, working group that they collected over the last year, and, uh, start putting some ideas on paper tomorrow, 10 o'clock right in this room. End of report.
Thank you very much. Any other councilors? Seeing no takers. Item eight, presentation of awards.
Seven.
I'm sorry, item seven. You're right, thank you. Uh, citizens' comments. We set this time aside if there are any citizens that want to let us know of anything, that want to, well, squeeze us by the neck, or if they want to, uh, praise us because we did a good job, or anything in between. Seeing no takers in that? Yeah. Offer. Now I'll move on to presentation of awards, item eight. And I understand that, uh, both people, Dustin Lion Decker and Sean Willie, uh, because of other commitments, are unable to make it this evening. So those will be forwarded to next month's meeting if, uh, if we can get them here at that time. The consent agenda is considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member so requests. Item nine of the consent agenda, council order number 061801, request of the Deputy Finance Director to set the real estate and personal property tax due dates at September 13th, 2018, and March 14th, 2019. Item 10, council order number 061802, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector for an order of the municipal offices on the application of real estate and personal property tax payments. This order will allow for the tax collector and treasurer to apply tax payments against the oldest unpaid bills. Item 11, council order number 061803, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through the municipal claim, claims deed. There is a request to remove as there were no timeshares sold this month. And lastly, item 12, council order number 061804, request of the city clerk for review and acceptance of the results from the City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Municipal Referendum Election on June 12th, 2018. Are there any councilors that would like any of these items removed? Seeing none, is there a motion or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Item 13, public hearing in action on the applications for re, for new or renewal of the following licenses. Douglas J. Keim and Rachel E. Wallace, DBA Homestead Motel and Cottages, 143 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. Martin and Ware, DBA Central Main Pyrotechnics, Pyro City Main, DBA Pyro City Main Fireworks Store, 328 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city consumer fireworks retail sales license. Charles B. and Ari, Ari, uh...
Ariella.
Ariella. L. Zucker, DBA Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license, and Manny's Greek Grill LLC, 248 State Street, Suite N, for renewal of a city Class C license, liquor and vixxular, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class III and IV, malt and vinous liquor license. Madam Clerk, are, if, everything in compliance on all of these requests? No issues? I'll open the public hearing on the request of Douglas J. Keim and Rachel E. Wallace, DBA Homestead Motel and Cottages. Are there any, anyone that would like to make any comments? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Public hearing open on Martin and Ware Incorporated, DBA Central Main Pyrotechnics, Pyro City Main, DBA Pyro City Main Fireworks Store. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment on this application? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Public hearing is open for Charles B. and Ariella L. Zucker, DBA Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? And lastly, public hearing is open for Manny's Greek Grill LLC, 248 State Street, Suite N, for renewal of a city Class C license. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counselors?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Council order number four, uh, uh, item, agenda item number 14, council order number 061805, request of the library trustees to approve a bid from Pine State Elevator for repairs to the library's elevator. Mr. Manager. All right?
Are you ready? Okay. Um, so I'm here on behalf of the Ellsworth Public Library Trustees, and, um, we are requesting acceptance of a bid from Pine State Elevator for repairs to our elevator. This was our fiscal year 18 capital improvement request that was approved by city council during the last budget cycle last year. Uh, so we went out to bid, um, we contacted three elevator companies, we received bids from two of them, um, and those are in your packet for this meeting, and I can answer any questions about any of those. Um, they are, each bid contains, um, actually two different scenarios, two versions of the bid. One is a very basic repair to the elevator, which is, um, to replace the controller, um, and the second is a more comprehensive modernization that brings us up to compliance with ADA standards and just repairs some other issues. Library trustees reviewed the options and decided that the more comprehensive option was the most cost-effective long-term, and it would save us, save the city money, um, on, uh, future repairs, so, uh, they are, they opted for the cheaper of the two comprehensive bids, which came in from, um, Pine State Elevator, um, and that is for $44,390.
Any questions, please?
I have one, but I think it's probably directed to our staff and not the library director. In the budget book that I have on my desk at home, I can't find the elevator CIP in any document from last year. What, how did we fund that? Was that from fund balance? Moved it over?
Yep.
That's what we'll do.
Will do, from this year?
Correct.
And I would add that it's probably a bit confusing because it started out in the operating budget of the library last year, and we ended up putting it towards their, their...
Taking that out of their budget and funding it.
Their so-called fund balance, and, yep.
Okay. I just couldn't find it anywhere.
No, but I think that was the source of the confusion, because it got moved, shuffled around at the end.
Any other questions?
What was the dollar amount?
$44,000. $44,390.
And what, did we move over 50?
That's what we anticipated.
Yeah, okay. But now you just move over what we need?
Exactly.
And, as the council will recall, you took the, um, unallocated funds from the library, put them towards a capital account, that at the approval of, uh, the council could be used, so it would come out of that account, under a restricted fund.
And then my final question, Mr. Chairman. Um, if we haven't moved it over there yet, should we leave the account number out of the motion, because it's not there right now? Because it lists the capital improvement library account with a number, and if it's not there yet, if we're not going to do it to the year end?
You can do that. Um, I just need to see the...
I can't comprehend, no.
So I request that it be funded from the library, uh, no, from the assigned fund balance, rather than...
Right, that was the word I was looking for.
The assigned fund balance.
Assigned fund balance.
I have a question. I talked with, um, a few days ago with Travis McDuffie, um, the service manager for Pine State.
Yep.
And we were talking about the section of the bid work to be done by others.
Right.
And we went through that. It could come up to, uh, as much as another $8,500 above and beyond the, um, the bid of 44,390.
Yeah, that did come up when I talked with Travis as well. Um, so we haven't priced that out, so that's the, um, the caveat, um, and that's, that's the reason why we requested 50,000, because we were hoping to have a little bit of a buffer if we needed extra work. We anticipate, um, we will need electrical work, so, um, we would need to, um...
So it could be as much as... 52,000 and change.
Right. Yeah, at this point, yeah, we're just requesting funds for the, um, for the work done by Pine State, but, um, yeah, we do anticipate we might need some additional funds to complete the project.
Should the motion include that?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman, since they don't have the information on it, they don't have the, the, um, numbers nailed down. I can tell you, in the world of construction, um, this stuff's going to take quite a while to get. Uh, so I think what they're doing is putting a placeholder in there that, yes, we're going to order it, get it coming, and then they can get with Pine State, their chosen contractor, and with either an engineer or an electrical engineer, and decide exactly what the other components are, and it's within the manager's $10,000 purview.
It is.
And we would certainly offer support to the library with our public works director and, as well, and, uh, give more of the support they needed sorting through those things.
I think Finance Director of City, no, excuse me, the, the, the up-and-coming Deputy City Manager.
I did want to add, if it's coming from assigned fund balance, that it would require a council approval, so you could say not to exceed 52,000 from assigned fund balance to cover those other costs.
And you did allocate, I can't remember the exact figure, but well in excess of this last year into that assigned fund balance for the, for capital improvements for the library, so I think that would cover it.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Counselor Harrington?
Uh, just, uh, just in terms of, um, are you planning to execute the contract prior to July 1?
Um, we wouldn't have to. I mean, we anticipate the, um, actual work would be done in the late fall, so depending on, if we would need to wait to execute the contract until July, that would be fine. Um, we'd let Pine State know they were selected, that we could...
Because I, just, that would, where it was coming from, if it was, if it's...
It probably wouldn't make a difference because it's a rolled-over assigned fund balance.
Do some...
So it doesn't lapse unless you wish it to lapse.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the bid from Pine Street Eleva, Pine State Elevator for $44,390 to modernize the library elevator, and a, a contingent fund of not to exceed a total of $53,000 from the assigned fund balance for ancillary, um, contracts to finish the project.
Second. Next discussion?
Did you say 390 or 4, uh, 490 for the last three numbers?
44,390.
Oh, okay.
There was a hundred-dollar mistake, and they said that, in an email, that they would honor the lower number, if I remember right.
Yep.
That was a bargain.
You happy with the bargain? Yes. Any further discussion? Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Item 15, council order number 061806 has been withdrawn from the agenda. Item 16, council order number 061807, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector to set the interest rate on overdue taxes.
Good evening, Kelly Herr, Tax Collector. I come before you this evening to request setting the interest on overdue taxes, which is an annual request. The maximum interest amount allowed is 8%. The rate is established by the Treasurer of the State of Maine and is based on the prime rate that is published in the Wall Street Journal. Taxes are considered delinquent, and interest begins on each installment the first day after its specified due date. 2018 is the first year since 2010 that there was an increase in the maximum rate of interest. The past eight years had a maximum rate of 7.5%. Uh, this year, it was increased to 8. The past three years, the city's rate has been set at 5%. Due to the increase in the prime rate per the state, does the council recommend staying at 5%? Or are you in favor of increasing to 6%?
Counselor Fordham?
Just to comment that, um, since they've set that rate, um, the feds have gone up, I believe, 25 basis points.
Yeah.
And they're looking at three more, three more increases this year.
Yep.
So to keep up with that, um, I'd suggest at least six.
Is there a motion?
No, but I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I s, I think six is a, is a very fair number, uh, but I, I also like to suggest that, um, we're dealing with two different parties here. We are dealing with the, the people who are struggling to pay the taxes, and then we're pay, we're struggling to get taxes in from people, uh, who find it's cheaper to pay the interest of the city than it is the interest of other places. Um, so, uh, I don't think I'd want, want to see any more than six, but I would support six.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 061807, request of the Tax Collector Deputy Treasurer to set the interest rate on overdue taxes at 6% for the coming year.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Item 17, public hearing in action on budget resolutions for FY 2019.
You ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, I want to thank Deputy City Manager Moat and Finance Director Mador, and all our department heads and all of our staff who, uh, contributed to this effort. I think you'll find that this is a fiscally constrained budget, one new position. Uh, I did the math, and if my math is correct, we're up in terms of the municipal budget, which is all really that's in play tonight, uh, as the school budget has already been approved by the council and by the voters, but our municipal budget this year was up one-tenth of a mil. I did the math over the last three years. It's up about just a hair over a quarter of a mil. That is an average of about 1.2% increase a year. Uh, so I think the staff and, and the council, everyone work, working together, um, have put together a very responsible budget. I think going forward, I think the council recognizes, and certainly the staff does as well, that we've got to look at investing in the future. Uh, as you recall, three years ago, our police fleet was, uh, I think the average mileage on the cars was, you know, north of six figures, uh, and, uh, the council and staff worked very hard, uh, to bring that fleet, um, you know, into a good state of repair, uh, and it's likewise on the side of the Public Works Department that we need to look at investing in the future, as well as our infrastructure and other items, so, uh, Deputy City Manager Moat, one of her first tasks was going to be to look at our capital improvements, uh, needs and how we finance them, and the best methods of doing that. Uh, but otherwise, I think that, uh, we've got a very good staff in place, a good management team, uh, and, uh, working forward, we're going to work towards more efficiencies within City Hall, more automation, uh, certainly in our finance department, and, um, you know, work in other ways to, uh, best serve the taxpayers, but also those who live here as well and, and are in need of our services. Uh, but, uh, that's the budget, and, uh, we appreciate all your support.
Thank you very much. Any comment or discussion? Counselor?
So I'll just reiterate what's came up in a, a work session. Um, first, I think it's, it is a good budget, um, but I think also going forward, um, we do need to, and I would hope start that in the course of the next year, of just looking at what we need for city resources, city services, uh, so that when we start developing a budget, we're basing it on what the city needs, not just individual departments, individual services, and then trying to cobble the budget together. I think we need to look at all those services, all the... I think we need to look at all those services, all the, all the things that the city provides, prioritize to get to exactly what you're talking about, because there are needs. But we also need to do it in the context of kind of looking at from the ground up of where we are with our population size, what resources we currently have in place, and what it's going to look like. Because I think it's hard to just take and vote on positions, should we add this position or that position, without understanding exactly what we think it should look like as a city. And if we don't know the full picture as a city, it's hard to know what positions we need going down the road.
Thank you. Any other comment? Counselor Cordia?
I'm going to hit it a little differently than the city manager did. Total appropriations on the municipal side of this budget, from last year to this year, on a 12.9 million dollar municipal side, the increase was 52,000. And all our unions got raises. Our non-union staff got very small raises. And to see a budget come out with only a 52,000 increase, with that understood that the most of the expense are our people, I think it's a very lean budget. And I congratulate the senior staff and department heads and the manager of this council for working up butts off the last six, eight weeks and left no rock unturned. We were talking about 1,000 here, 500 there, so...
We were.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A different way of looking at it is that this year is the first year of three where we're actually going to have a little bit more taxable property out there. Last year, the state took almost 10 million dollars away from us, this taxable property. The year before, they took 8 million dollars. To replace that, it takes a lot of money and a lot of... So what we've done over the last three years is try to work with a reduced amount of taxable income that we're going to have and not have to raise the taxes. I think going from here forward, things may look a little bit better because we have some growth coming in the city. We have a little bit more taxable money coming in, taxable property to tax. So, you know, I've seen in my time on the council, a time where we had a 3% raise in the municipal budget and never had a tax increase at all because it was all growth. Over the last three years, we have not seen that. We've seen a decrease, not an increase, in taxable property. So I think we're in good shape.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I would have a question of staff first.
Sure.
Because I couldn't answer it earlier. Remind us on what part of the resolutions have to be read into the record.
So it has to be a public hearing?
Yep.
And then the adoption, where it says here it'd be resolved?
Okay.
That portion and then...
But you don't have to read the individual account?
No.
Just the result?
And then the second page where it has the capital of the library of water and wastewater. Each of these are...
Okay.
So we can do the public hearing first?
Yep.
Public hearing is open on the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2019. If there's any comment from the public, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address and state your comment. Seeing no large rush to the podium. Public hearing is closed. Tammy? We'll do these one at a time?
No, you can do it as a whole, read that first section, and then where it says specified as follows and as attached, and then the same thing on, I don't have the page numbers on this.
Okay.
You can stay right there and walk it through.
Okay.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You ready, Matt?
Yes.
I would move the adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2019. It hereby resolves the sum 19,851,539, which constitutes the estimated requirements of the various city accounts for the fiscal year 2019, based upon the budget submitted by the city managers provided by the charter, the raised assessments upon the inhabitants of the City of Elsworth, and upon the estates of non-resident proprietors of the city for the present municipal year, and that the sums hereby appropriate, in addition to the sums as otherwise provided, the amount for each purpose being specified in the attached document. Further resolve that the City of Elsworth City Council approves the budgets for the following departments in the amount specified. 0900 capital improvement budget, 879,361. Elsworth Public Library, 0500. Revenue of 709,495. Expenditures of 709,495. Water Department, revenue of 1,21500. Expenditures of 1,392,550. Wastewater Treatment Plant, revenue of 1,922,000,000. That's a long way down there. Expenditures of 1,897,357. End of motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 18, Council Order Number 061808, request to amend the City of Elsworth Procurement Policy, Section 4, Purchase Orders, from $10,000 to $20,000. Had a situation here a couple of weeks ago on the fire alarm. Emergency system here in the building went on the blink. Bid came in at 16,000 and change. Manager's authorization is $10,000. So there's been discussion on, on raising that. We put it on the agenda to do that. Counselor?
So I, I'm in favor of increasing that in part because I, I think the city manager needs to have the resources to manage day-to-day operations, and I think a $10,000 limit doesn't suffice in those situations. And I don't think the council has to get involved in, in some of those discussions and actions, and I think it actually delays it in those situations. The city manager operates within the budget that's approved by the council. There's oversight of that, and I just think that in order for the city manager, who we entrust with the, the daily operations to be able to have that flexibility, that increasing it beyond $10,000 would be appropriate to be able to efficiently respond to situations as they come up. Certainly, the Finance Committee meets on a, on a weekly basis. There's plenty of opportunity for council involvement, and, and so I, I'm in favor of, of increasing that. $20,000 in my mind is flexible, but I just think it needs to be greater than, than the 10,000.
Thank you.
And I, I think it's also very important, particularly when it becomes a, or is a matter of urgency to get something done, whether, you know, if it's the safety or, or whatever, something that requires quick action.
How often does this happen? How often do we run across a situation where it's, you know, that $10,000 isn't going to be enough? I mean, if, if it's a decision based on a one-time thing, and I've only been here for, you know, a short amount of time, so I'm asking the rest of the council, how often is this, is the $10,000? I think $20,000 is too much money, personally. So how often does it happen, Gary? That it, we need, that he needs more than 10,000 to, to address something that has to be addressed right then?
I, I don't think in my, God, 26 years, that it has caused an issue. Couple of weeks ago, the fire alarm panel didn't cause an issue. We followed the chatter, we followed everything. We had Mark call an emergency meeting for the next morning. We dealt with it. It wouldn't have helped to have a $60,000 limit because that fire alarm panel came out of a capital account. It wasn't a budgeted item. I can see if you limit it to budgeted items, you can raise a little bit. But I appreciate the transparency and the process that we were able to put in place for that fire alarm panel. I would tell you that I think that if David had gone and ordered that, that everything would have been fine, because he has the right to put in writing that when it's public health and safety, he puts it in writing, finding a fact, then it's well within his discussion area in expenditures. So if we didn't have the possibility of calling an emergency meeting the next morning and doing it, then I would have been fine with writing it down that this is why I think it's an emergency and doing it. I also agree with Dale that 10 is an old number. I'd be comfortable popping it to 15 and let's see if that's appropriate. But transparency for the taxpayer is what I sit at this table for, and David can't get fired by the taxpayers for the mil rate. We can. So...
What does the mil rate have to do with this issue?
Spending money translates directly into taxes.
Sure. But how it's spent is, is, is what the council is charged with also, being...
Yep.
Responsible for what money goes out. And I, I think $10,000 is plenty of money. I think that, I don't know, you can increase it and it sounds like it really won't matter, that there aren't a lot of issues that come up that would require more than 10. That's why I would increase it. If we had a history, or even a recent history, of a lot of issues coming up that got, impeded his ability to, to handle things and we weren't able to address them, then I think then that would pose, that would show that there is an issue and we needed to look at it and make adjustments so that he can conduct business. But if it's, if we're looking at a single incident over many years, I don't think that's enough to make the change. I think things have, it sounds to me as though things have worked well, and it's, it, it seems arbitrary if it hasn't been, if we don't have a proven history of a need to go higher. I think it's, I think it's, I don't know, I think it's more important to have safeguards there than it is to, to pass a rule on, on exception.
And I agree with you. I was forming my willingness to, to negotiate and to be supportive. But I, I too agree, 10 is, is a good number for me, but I'm willing to go up a little bit if it pleases the rest of the council.
Counselor Beatham?
This is going to happen with equipment more than anything else. A new diesel engine for the grader is probably $30,000 or better. A new transmission is probably 15. We had a problem with a, with a loader, with an excavator. The parts were over $7,000, and by the time you got it fixed, it was probably well over 10. There, there's a lot of times when, when there's money to be spent, but how do you want to spend it? Do you want to put that $30,000 motor in that grader? Or is it time to look at it and bite the bullet and maybe do something different, like buy a new one, or rent one, or lease one? Those decisions are council decisions. And I agree with both Gary and Dale and everybody else on the council. There's, there has to be limits, but there has to be enough latitude to be able to do things. Right now, we have a very good staff in City Hall. We have a very good staff that goes clear down to the Public Works. And we have things in place now that we didn't have a year ago. And things get brought to us a lot better, a lot quicker, and with recommendations as well. But they're still council decisions. I could support raising it a little bit, but I don't believe that 20,000 is the right number. I think something less than 20,000 is the, is the right number. If it's 10, that's probably enough 99% of the time. But I would go with Gary, at 15 is probably an acceptable number for me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I could support 15.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I didn't see a motion in here, is there one?
I still like 10, but in the spirit of being friendly, I would agree with 15.
Now, an issue that I have is numerous places in this procurement policy list $10,000. So if a motion is to blanket the manager's purchasing limit on all instances that he's limited in this, up to 15,000, then staff can go through and...
All right.
Plug 15 in, 15 in, 15 in. But I don't see a, a motion attached.
I would add that I think, I think you would agree in most cases of expenditures under that 10,000 dollar limit, you normally know pretty quickly.
Contact a motion on the floor?
So, so I would move that we amend the City of Elsworth Procurement Policy, Section 4, Purchase Orders, Number 4, from 10,000 to 15,000.
I'll be really friendly and second it.
I won't let you down. Could I, could I offer up a friendly amendment that removes your Section 4 purchase policy and say wherever the manager's spending limit in this ordinance is $10,000, we take it to 15,000?
Accept it.
Thank you.
Because it's in numerous places.
Does that work for finance?
It's in Section 7, it's in Section 8. It's in Section 10, so, yeah.
John wants to know if that works for you, Jen?
Yes.
Motion and a second, along with a friendly amendment.
Was that friendly amendment accepted by the motion and the second? Okay. Just that.
In the most friendliest way possible.
Next thing you know, Jen's one, I'm going to go up to 1,000 instead of 500.
Run the discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 19, Public Hearing in Action on Council Order Number 061809, Authorization for Tax Anticipation Borrowing, $2 million.
Good evening. Jen Mador, Interim Finance Director. The city anticipated a need for a tax anticipation note. The tax anticipation note will be used for financing governmental activities, obligations of the city. of the city, in anticipation of funds to be raised by taxation. In preparation for the tax anticipation note for FY 2019, a cash analysis was prepared in order to determine how much money the city would require. It was decided that $2 million would best fit our needs. Key Bank came in with a low bid of 2.34%.
Grab it quick. That was an aggressive bid.
Comments? Questions?
I know, there was, I think, almost what, a half a basis point between the top and the bottom of that spread. So you're right, Council 40, that was an aggressive bid.
You know, we're going to take it at his bank and walk it down the street, put it in that checking account.
Is there a motion?
Motion to move the, the tax anticipation note to Key Bank at an interest rate of 2.34% for a $2 million tax anticipation note as presented.
Excuse me, it's out of order, we need a public hearing before a motion.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
It's the public hearing for a motion on the proposed $2 million tax anticipation note. Is any comments? Please go ahead, to the podium.
I guess I just have to, my name's Gene Lyons, 62 gram weigh in Ellsworth. I guess I'm kind of wondering why you need to borrow $2 million.
Because taxes don't come in until September, so we have to have money to spend July.
What about last year that you got tax money from everybody?
We did 1.5 million last year.
Seriously?
Yep. This is an annual event that gets paid back in taxation.
Well, yeah, but if you don't run off the money that you got from last year, how exactly do you know borrowing it? It had more interest. My taxes are high. My evaluation on my house is about double what it should be. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Along with the motion that is offered, do we need to recognize the council order and the title of the authorization? Or do we, I just want to make sure it's okay with the bond counsel? In order to make it tax exempt, do we have to make note of the authorization for tax anticipating borrowing?
Yeah, and then I would just say.
As presented.
Per the council order, yes.
So you need the council order number and the title?
Yeah, we just need to find a way to make note in the motion of the resolution as presented, because that's what goes to the bond counsel. Make sure that it's tax exempt bond issue.
So Mr. Chairman, make a motion to award the tax anticipation note to Key Bank at an interest rate of 2.34% for a $2 million tax anticipation note as presented and as ordered in the resolve, Council Order 061809, Title Authorization for Tax Anticipation Borrowing.
I'd second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 20, Council Order Number 061810, Request the City Manager to Extend the Contract for Norton Park Mowing and Grounds Maintenance Services with Goodall Landscaping.
Thank you. Filling in for City Manager Cole. So the beginning of this fiscal year, Goodall Landscaping was awarded the mowing and grounds maintenance contract. This contract includes the mowing, the weeding, mulching, opening and closing of Norton Park and the pest control applications that they do on the field there. So the city is looking to extend that contract for another year. There are no increases to the contract, and they have provided excellent customer service over the past year. And Steve Joyle, I spoke with him, and he has been very pleased with the results of Goodall Landscaping.
Counselor.
Can you tell me, obviously, before I started, what, what was the process for awarding it to Goodall? Was there a bid process?
We did. We had sent it out to four separate vendors, and we received two bids back, and Goodall was the, was who was awarded the bid.
Were there local vendors that were?
Yes.
If I remember right, I don't believe Goodall was the flat-out lowest bid.
No, best value.
It was the best value, and it, and it was taking us to less chemical application on our fields, where the other vendor didn't, wasn't interested in that. So it was a decision by this council to, to move our parks into a more friendly use of.
Less chemical, more green applications for the kids running on the field and rolling in the grass.
Thank you, Jefferson.
And from what I've seen on the, the way the grounds have looked, the, this natural green, the products that they use, they've done very well. I'm surprised that, I didn't think they'd do this well the first year. I thought it would take at least three years.
Yeah, they warned us it might take two or three to see the results.
They did. I have to admit, it, it looks nice. Any further discussion? Thought you were bringing your arm up there, Counselor.
Oh, you ready?
Yes, sir, I am.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Deputy City Manager to extend the contract for Norton Park mowing and grounds maintenance services, contract to Goodall Landscaping.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 21, Council Order Number 061811, Request of the City Manager to Extend the Contract for Lawn Treatment Services at City Hall, Merrill Park, S.K. Whiting Park, Harbor Park, Triangle at Demire, Wilson Field, and Demire Fields 1, 2, and 3 with Goodall Landscaping.
Just as the council was just discussing, that last year we had some residents express some concerns about the use of chemicals on our fields, so we went out to RFP to find a better alternative. And last year, it was awarded to Natural Lawn of America, who is run by Goodall. And the city, again, is looking to extend that contract for an additional year.
It's the same price?
Same prices, yes, sorry about that. Same pricing.
Counselors, any questions, comments?
Given the drought that we had last year, and the iffy weather we've had this year, making that Goodall, make the fields still somewhat green, that's quite an accomplishment.
I see a lot of green out there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Deputy City Manager to extend the lawn treatment services contract to Natural Lawn of America per the attached per-unit application pricing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 22, Council Order Number 061812, Appointment of Jennifer Mador as Treasurer by the City Council.
Hey, Mr. Chair, as you know, since the beginning of the year, Jen Mador has been in the interim position of Finance Director and by extension Treasurer for the city. In the recent restructuring plan that brought Tammy Moat back as Deputy City Manager, as you well remember, the plan is to eliminate the Deputy City Managers, excuse me, not eliminate the Deputy City Manager. Excuse me, the Deputy Finance Director, it's been a long week, folks. Deputy Finance Director's position that Jen currently fills and elevate that to that of Finance Director. I have to say that you've all have heard this, this is the flip side of the coin from the elevation of Tammy Moat as Deputy City Manager. This is the other part of the plan. But the part that I do want to note with emphasis tonight is that Jen took over at a time of great turnover in the Finance Department, leaves of absence, and she stepped up under very challenging conditions and has seen it through. And I want to say, with, with all enthusiasm, it's time to drop the interim on both of those positions. And again, we've discussed this before, the fact is that Tammy Moat will be performing certain financial activities in her new role, which are around borrowings and capital improvements planning, Chief Budget Officer and all those types of things. And Jen is going to be focusing on the day-to-day core activities of the finance and accounting and revenue collection and such. I, I do want to add, though, that the restructuring plan that I'm putting in place also involves automation. I've told the, the IT staff that short of the day-to-day, keeping the trains running, we need to automate, we need to reduce the amount of foot traffic going through the Finance Department, we need to make our employees more self-sufficient in terms of being able to get information online, whether it's budget, whether it's benefits, payroll, all those types of things, we're looking at automation to help streamline things. So that's the plan, and Jen is an integral part of implementing that. And I would ask you, on both the following two motions, to, to confirm Jennifer Mador as Finance Director and Treasurer.
Thank you. Counselors? Comments?
I see that the first order is us appointing Treasurer, and then the second one is confirming your appointment as Finance.
In retrospect, Counsel, I probably would have put that the other way around, but either way.
I just want to say that over the last five months, I've had many questions of Jen. I've called her, I've stopped by the office, I've emailed her. And especially with the emails, it's Jen, just whenever you have time, at your convenience. Within 10 minutes, I have my answer. My little cowbell or whatever it is on the iPad will, will ding, and sure enough, there's the answer that I was looking for. Time and time again, this has happened. I think Jen has proven herself quite capable of doing this, and I think it's high time that we drop the word interim also.
Any motion?
Mr. Chairman, move Council Order 061812, Appointment of Jennifer Mador as Treasurer by the City Council.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Steve says do the next one. Council Order 061813, Request of the City Manager to confirm the appointment of Jennifer Mador as Finance Director, so moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Sorry.
Congratulations.
Lucky you.
Note that it was a much quicker vote for Jennifer than it was for Tammy.
Yeah, oh yeah, no hesitation.
No hesitation.
Council Order Number, item 24, Council Order Number 061814, Appointment of City Officials by the City Council.
Counselor, Counselors, you have the annual list before you. Should you have any questions? As you know, these are the positions that need to be appointed every year.
Questions or comments?
How do you want to do this?
As presented.
That's a slight.
Yeah, as, as presented.
Mr. Chairman, move Council Order 061814, as presented. Appointment of City Officials.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? City Manager Cole, I just want to let you know that with the passage of that item, there is no extra stipend for tree warding.
No. It's a, it's a, you know, a heavy burden, but I'll manage another year.
I hope you didn't.
One he cherishes.
We can get you a badge.
Yeah, Pete has got a couple of sunglasses, you know, hat.
Item 25, Council Order Number 061815, Approval of the City Manager's Appointments.
I have one issue. Well, I have many, I have many issues, but I'll just bring one up now. I believe our requirements are, if we confirm the position, we also confirm the deputies or alternates or assistants. The one I'm missing is we elevated Steve Fuller to Assistant Planner. So I would like to ask if that could be added to the bottom as assistant, he's not assistant to the planner, he is assistant planner, that's one of the.
Yeah.
We have assistant, Deputy Hobbit Master, Assistant Assessor, Alternate Health Officer, Deputy this, Deputy that.
I don't have any problem with that.
No, and I mentioned it two year, a month or so ago in planning for this. I just think it would be inclusive, because he, he does carry the title of assistant, not assistant to.
Yep.
So I would ask that the list be altered to include Deputy Planner, excuse me, Assistant Planner Steve Fuller, expiration is 6/30/2019.
Was that in the form of a motion?
I move the Council Order 061815 as amended, including Stephen Fuller as Assistant Planner.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 26, executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. We are in executive session.
And there will be no further business after executive session?